America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the middle, with liberty and justice for all.
Any liquor licenses?
No. I make a motion to approve the agenda, the minutes, and the account payable with no liquor license.
I will second that motion.
That motion may be seconded to approve the agenda, the minutes as presented, account payable, and there are no liquor licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Here it is. I only had one meeting last week and it was Alice, A L U S, they're the formation company out of Canada. It's trying to move into the United States to help with conservation practices and stuff with farmers, Boston County. Uh, we're working on some money trying to get it for like green structures and stuff. You still got to be done and things and uh, it's just some bottlenecks and the government, they don't want us stepping on their toes because, you know, we can get the money immediately where if you go with the USDA, it's well, we'll put you on the list. If you make it to the top, uh, we'll help you out. And that's one thing about this outfit, you know, if you got a waterway, pond building, things like that, they do, we do it immediately.
Right away.
And we get a lot of donations from Old Pepsi-Cola, Bungee, Cargill, Cargill is a large one. Uh, all your seed companies, General Mills, places like that donate. You write, write them a letter and say, well, we're working on this project. Can you help donate? And they'll say, yeah, they'll send you seventy, eighty, maybe a hundred thousand dollars to work on. They want to see clean, clean water in the U.S.
Hey, the Zoom meeting, I was on a, on an ISAC board, uh, with other county officials throughout the state, uh, regarding tax sales and sheriff sales. So it's like the state wants to do some regulation changes and make some new laws regarding those and we'll be working on it to be continued.
So Golden Hills has no longer current Morgan as president and so we have, we as the board has selected Lisa Fox to be the interim. Um, she's a, a grant writer. That's her company. That's her business. So she can be quite an asset for Golden Hills since that's basically what they work on. So until we have time and read through some of the more applications, then we will, um, have a permanent CEO. But right now she's agreed to be the interim. So I'm pretty excited. I think she'll do a great job. And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, Mr. J Tube, it says you want to hire a greater operator.
We've selected Scott Shinbaum as our greater operator. Um, technically I have two greater operator positions open right now. So this is the first one. And then we're going to start interview processes for the next one. Uh, he will be working out of the Emerson shop. He's got a lot of experience with heavy equipment, not a greater specifically, but we're confident that that's going to transfer over really well. Pretty much every other thing. Mill leaders, mill leaders, excavators, he says mill leader, excavator. So I think it'll transfer over really well. Seems like he's got good work ethic. And I also like that he lives super close to Emerson. He's like five minutes away from the shop. So especially in the winter, the snowstorms, I mean, he can get it right away and start playing the roads.
Starting salary?
Starting salary twenty-three ninety-one per hour per union contract wages with the official start date of tomorrow. He's passed all of those pre-employment screenings and that's been fine.
Greater operator?
And I second that.
It's called, pronounced shoe bomb?
Shinbaum.
Shinbaum. Here we have a notion made and seconded to hire Scott Shinbaum as a new greater operator. With your union contract twenty-three ninety-one per hour. Starting date would be eight twenty-one of twenty-four. There are no further questions or concerns. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Motion carries. Bridge embargo.
All right. The next three resolutions, uh, came from the knowledge of Kevin. He says, when I was here, we used to have to do three of them every year, basically to cover your bases. Um, so the first one is bridge embargo. Even though we have signs posted, there's a story out there in some other county where a farmer went through a bridge that was not rated for legal loads. And because they didn't have a resolution to back up the signs, uh, the county was at fault. So this is something that now I'm aware of and we'll be doing this for the beginning of each year. So so I'm on the train right now. We have a bridge embargo resolution. On the back, we have the attachment of all the bridges, what they're posting, so and where they're located. So this is just designating, recognizing that all those bridges are in fact posted in embargo.
And certainly make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one of the bridge embargoes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-four twenty-one for bridge embargo. Roll call.
Cratch?
Yes.
Mayberry? Yes.
Bridge closure.
It's also worth noting that all the bridge, bridges that are embargoed, um, are not, none of them are on paved routes. And probably half to a little more than half are on dirt roads.
Okay.
These are prior exceptions.
Yeah. Resolution twenty-four twenty-two is for the closure of the bridge on Queen Ave, Crossing Deer Creek. This is one we've discussed. Where we reached a point where it can no longer handle any loads and it needs to be completely replaced. We had talked about tearing down, closing the road and then actually vacating the road. At this point, what we want to do is just close the bridge officially through this resolution, remove it. Not vacate the roads, just to keep the opportunity open. If we do come across some funds or a way to reconstruct it, we already have the railway in place. We still have the road. It would just be constructing a new bridge. So that's where the decision is a little bit altered for monthly. It's on Queen Avenue by three hundred and sixty.
Turn this southeast corner on. It's an interesting bridge for a guy. Especially we drag over, see holes through the bridge floor.
There's, right? Right there. The wall bash is that, why they're in the bridge.
He shows pictures.
Yeah, Jake, I don't think you want to close that road. I mean, if you do, how are the farmers?
Well, we were going to vacate it back to the other side of the wall bash trail. So that farmer would still have access. The field on the east side of the trail, but west of the creek, they have access on the north side.
So they have a, they traveled over that bridge to haul their grain out apparently.
Probably not doing it.
Got it. Okay.
I make the most of the two to the bridge closure.
And I second that.
Their motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-four twenty-two of bridge closure, bridge closure on Queen Avenue across Deer Creek. With the road remaining open. Roll call.
Cratch?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Vitten?
Yes. You don't have anything? To approve.
Next, we have resolution twenty-four twenty-three, annual road closure.
This resolution is basically a formality, giving me authority to close the roads. Or I can designate a contractor for doing construction to also close the roads. If the road be closed for more than forty-eight hours, real close, to designate the D C route. That's all this resolution is saying. But the county engineer has to close roads when necessary in emergencies or for any, any reason deemed necessary.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three for the annual road closures.
Second that motion.
The motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-four twenty-three for annual road closures by the county engineer for purposes already stated. Roll call.
Cratch?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'll copy these in there.
What else do you have for the engineers?
Couple of general discussion items. We did get the trees trimmed back on the, uh, speed limit sign on the ground coming off of five thirty-four. Just drove that before I came here. You can see it well now. And we had it located to put in more signs. Um, you brought up two hundred and fiftieth, then I also realized same thing could happen on Kid Road. So we're putting up four more signs to which direction. Um, the flies are set for locate. So hopefully this week we can get those signs in.
Good.
Um, Woodfield, the second phase or the latest phase of that subdivision, I didn't walk through, it gets dimmer. And, um, there was two minor things, a small crack about three feet and then some of the seal, the crap filling material was coming up. Um, he said they are going to now replace that, uh, fill material and router and seal that crack. So I'm going to go check that after this. The other items were some, I don't know, erosion control items, which is directly related to utilities doing work there. Um, so kind of what we did for Whitetail Run, I would like to move forward with recommending accepting the roadway because all the pavement looks great. It's just that along some of the roads where they're doing utility work, it's going to still be filled in a little bit and reseeded.
So utilities going to fix that?
It'll probably come back on the developer. So what we can do, like on Whitetail Run, we accepted the roads, but we had a separate agreement saying you are still in charge of the road, controlling these areas. So we'll get our signs out there and reverses for that. And then, yeah, move forward with the final part. Also looking to probably do the similar situation, uh, if you guys agree, as far as, uh, let go on now. What we can, we set the roads. I've looked at the pavement, looks good. There's a drainage ditch that needs some, um, attention and they're going to do that. Appreciate that.
They who?
The developers.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, but once he does that, he's still the permit holder for the sediment and erosion and all that outside of the roadways. He would still be in charge of that. So we would accept the roads with a separate agreement saying you're in charge of all the sediment, all the erosion until that permit is closed out of the economy.
Who's responsible to be cleaning out the sewer?
We would put in the agreement, we put it in the agreement that you're in charge of that. And at the time you're ready to close out that permit, we will inspect the pipes and if they're full of silk, that's on you to flush it out. So that way we know we're starting fresh. I suspect that with the flows out there and the grade of the pipes, they get completely, uh, flushed out. But we can expect it at the time.
Yeah.
Um, Levi and Broadmore, so Levi Road, Broadmore Estates. We had a Western engineering come out and kind of look into that with us. Um, we were going to do an overlay on Levi Road and overlay in Broadmore. And, um,
We're on Levi. Just like we've already overlaid or?
The whole.
Overlaid.
Yeah. The original plan on that overlay was to put two inches and two inches.
Yes, sir.
Pushed back. So what we're going to do is there's two inches on it now. We're going to come in with a half. It's not quite two inches. We, it's the one, one lift down all the way to three miles, two point one or two miles edge. So Western gave us a quote for that. They gave us a quote for Broadmore. We're a little bit over than what we budgeted, but still what I would say kind of right in the ballpark. Um, so I would like to bring that forward next week to you guys. Uh, they would like to do that this year again.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And I called, uh, Mary Beth from Broadmore. I still have my note when she called me two years ago saying, hey, is something to be done with my road? And I said, I'll get it on the plan. I'm working towards it. So I called her back and said, I never forgot about you. It was here at this time. So she was over the moon on happy about that.
I bet you made her day.
Yeah. And I think we'll probably go ahead and send out a letter to everyone in there just so that they kind of know what to expect.
Sure.
Um, then we're going to mill their driveways so it can tie in. Yeah. We thought about just putting asphalt right over, but problem with that is it fills up pretty quick. Even though it's not a lot of traffic, it just will over time. So if we mill it in, I mean, that's the best product that you can get. So just so they understand when they see us just grinding their driveway, they don't come running out scared. Let's see, we'll have that. I think that's about it.
Okay. I just saw what asked them. Do I need to last reflection?
Sure did.
I was asking to go and sort of mini always, uh,
Silk?
Silk.
Just talk to them. Just talk to them. Oh, they're supposed to be here about a week from today to start. So, yeah.
I think that most of the work people wanting to get done, if they're been done, some people want to do driveways and stuff.
Yeah, it's, we're at their mercy. They told us first part of August, mid-August, then until the September, not until late August. So one of their operators had heart operations. So and they have one day to finish up the process. So kind of wait for him to recover. Finish that job, then they'll come and they'll bring it. So hopefully within this two weeks, two, three weeks. The scrub seal negro man got pushed back to mid-September. It's, you know, that was supposed to be July and it's in August, not September. You always get the same answer from contractors, from the weather, it's weather related.
Absolutely. Okay. So I see they're cleaning the canyon out by Lundy's Place. They're on Levi. Or is that kid? No, it's kid. It's kid.
Yeah. What's her name? By the Bode, the winner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Was her name Christine?
Yes.
Yeah.
So they couldn't.
We went out there and talked to her. Basically there's been a sinkhole on the outlet side for a long time and she was concerned. And so finally got out there, took a look at it, came back. He brought in the screws and they've been digging away, trying to find the problem. They found that the pipe did separate about six inches. And so that's where we're getting sinkholes, the water. The pipe below is plugged and then it separated. So it's coming out and you're sorted. So what we're doing there is we're going to basically put it off there, patchy hole, go and get new pipe out and then address the outlets.
Yeah, good.
It's still not the best fix because you can see the pipe under the road isn't in the best condition. But there's no great way to do it because it's paved road and the detour is quite large for that. But, um, yeah, we're, right now we're going to get it fixed and everything. There's nothing to worry about, but long-term we might think, well, maybe we should just close the road down for a couple of weeks and take care of it. It's a job we can handle. It's just the detour is not very good. And there's no pathway to get there either. Just look at that too. Yeah.
Well, it's going to clean up that corner real nice.
Yeah, definitely. I said, there is an option. It would be a good candidate for slip lining. You don't have to tear the road at all and get out gas dentures and slip line it. It's like resin fiberglass material.
That would fix the plate. It's can fix it.
The problem is that the pipe is kind of so it may kind of dislodge.
Good.
But that's wheels are spinning out there, figure out more long-term. But right now we're just going to go the can right now and fix the problem on paper.
Good. You were already working on this one. Super.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
No one else from my last name.
Oh, right.
But he then.
No, it was type building. On all of them?
Yeah. It's fine.
She's Danish, not Swedish.
Well, I'm not.
Sorry. Double check.
It's like you do. Enjoy the life.
Nothing else?
You're good.
Sure. All right. Let's see you guys later this week.
That's a good word.
Party area. I don't think I'll be at the party Thursday, the networking event.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'll be around for meetings.
Okay.
Good.
All right. We'll see you.
See you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh.
Sure.
Give him a few minutes.
All right. I don't even have to sit down. Yeah. Uh, first you guys last week, uh, tabled it this week, Bonnie's Courtier is going from full-time to part-time.
Bonnie's?
Courtier, C O U R T I R. Effective today.
Oh, you want that to say?
She wanted to stay working full-time, but she didn't have daycare on the weekends and two kids, she can't afford to do both. So she's willing to stay on part-time and help out where we do.
And I second that.
Motion made and seconded to move a detention officer from full-time to part-time. Any other questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Motion carries.
Oh, what does she mean now for her time?
It'd be the same day, whatever she makes now. But Sabrina Jones said, I didn't have to put that on there. So all she's gone and she's just losing all the benefits.
Oh.
So she didn't have, she just had to pay now is all she is.
Got it.
I didn't know for a minute. You guys remain.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, sir. No, thank you.
Joe, be together.
You guys want Joe?
Yeah, it'd be great, Josh.
This quarter.
So it's good to see you.
I know, yeah.
What's going on in your life? Naughty, naughty, naughty people.
Yeah. Life from New York City was cancer club. So there's to help Josh with this. Move all the stuff from today's agenda to Thursday. Tomorrow's all day due report.
It's all day.
Yes. Yes. And so if they don't get done today, we'll try to squeeze into that magistrate courtroom and it's like a clown car in there because you got every, all the kids, all the parents, all the attorneys for all the people, the social workers, the providers. Oh my gosh.
At least we're not dealing with the, uh, human health.
Yeah. True, that's terrible.
It's Jerry Doobie Day, so we're, we're being the people that
guiding people.
Yes, nobody knows where the elevator is. They come in and they get stuck.
Okay, for that.
Yeah.
Going upstairs. No. No.
I mean, well, maybe they can't see this.
Maybe they, maybe they just, there just needs to be something, a jury report at third floor. I mean, that doesn't matter because they don't have to get.
Right. Yeah, right.
So you want to hire a universal clerk?
Yes, I do. And her name is Stephanie Foucher. C O U R T I R. She has passed out her pre-employment screening and her start date is tomorrow, eight twenty-one of twenty twenty-four. Starting salary is forty-nine thousand, ten dollars per year.
A universal clerk, is that just everybody, the all stations?
She's, she's going to be doing driver's license, uh, car drives, then she'll go for the, move her, move her over to motor vehicle to learn registration titles. Excuse me, then we'll get her to taxes to
She's going to be a driver?
Driver, yes.
Good.
We will get her trained for that and we'll be back up and going here if I do that. I guess maybe three or four weeks. She has to go to any county for training and then well. So they, they are doing fast training now because everybody's spending the same time. So good. So yeah, that'd be great. Yes, it will. Be nice to pull this back again.
I make the motion to approve the hire of a universal clerk for the treasurer's office.
And I second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve hire of a universal clerk for the treasurer's office. Starting salary of forty-one thousand.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, excuse me. Ten dollars. Any other questions, concerns?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Motion carries.
I'm on an ISAC board that is looking at every aspect of the tax state laws and the, uh, the resolution. Look like some of them, but it looks good.
Okay.
Sounds like it's coming from above.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
I have some questions to ask you.
Yeah. I love that.
I'll, I'll know more this week.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, question. We kind of went over a little bit before the meeting, but we had just about a million dollars in bill payment here on this pay period. We're down rather low on currency. You want me to put out a, to all department heads to cease?
We, we need to curb it until, till we set up some tax money in.
So October at least, right? I mean, yeah, we get, it's supposed to start September one, but
But everybody knows that they have to, they know they, they have till the thirtieth to pay their taxes. So most generally, everybody
Paying on the thirtieth?
Yes, wait till the last, last minute to do it.
Yeah. But no, I will be more than glad to do that because I, I can't.
When you're down to two million, that's, that's pretty low. Yeah, especially when
We're not cashing M C D and stuff.
No, no.
Other than bills that have to be paid, that's all we need. You know, your phone bill, your water bills, things like that, electric, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't need to be buying mine.
Yes.
Right.
Right, right. Yeah. If you could just keep it down to essential things that you have to have and we have to pay right now.
I'll work with the auditor and
That would be great.
We'll get a statement made up and
Right.
Is that all you, you, Carol?
Sounds good. We're definitely not going to cash in CDs, not when they can be getting this good interest. Yeah, I think most of.
You don't have a lot if I put out a statement telling people not to spend money, nothing to do any good, but.
We'll just slow down.
There we go, slow down or.
It's maybe too essential, we don't want like these. Right, right, just too essential, I hope it sells too. Okay. Sounds good. I can, I sure will.
When are you going up, going there or not?
I don't know when I'm going. I don't have the stuff, so I haven't taxed up yet.
You just don't, you have to keep it there enough skipper shop when they open their mailbox.
Do you need help stuffing like I did last year? No, I've got all that done, I've got that done, this will be outsourced, so it will come from the the E O S, the company that is doing. Well, A O K. I know, I know, it's professional. But yeah, uh they're out of, I believe it's Waterloo, so he said if I can get the stuff from one day, they should be able to have it hanging out. Okay, so, but no, I got all the the journey in.
So the other two print, pardon, the other two go, do they print three or four years yet?
They print, fine, it's just that she can't get them to go into solutions, so if somebody comes in to pay them, I can't, there's so many there.
We're hoping we have another fix.
Yeah, exactly, so. And I was.
Yeah.
I I I gave her that information and I have not heard that, so I am hoping with that.
We should stop.
Gets down.
All that we're doing as a group or individually live.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks. Ready?
You're up.
Awesome. I'm sharing each. Yeah, it's a good destiny of this year. It's a great place to live. Oh, you know, my whole, my jacket, I wasn't sure.
Where are we gonna do this winter?
That's why I'm saying, if it's this fall now, where are we gonna keep, cause it looks great. I gotta keep.
I gave you a copy of the most current budget, um we had a few changes, there was one new grant we applied for that we didn't get, so we took out. Um the expenses to kind of even that out, um through the end of over the five hundred thousand in term funding. We had some insurance changes, so um that is just the most current.
All right, insurance one up again?
No, we just had staffing.
Oh, okay.
So. So the other trip, some that were taken family, the new hires are single and.
No Caitlin, I think that Caitlin.
She.
She did, but um one of our home makers.
Okay, well, you said new hires, you had two that I'm aware of, and one did, one did not.
Right, okay. Yeah, we're on the same page, Amy. So this is just the updated and then numbers, it's a total budget is less than the one we brought you for the previous and then the vice versa. We just wanted to be sure we were really the updated figures and um keeping you informed of any changes that we had on the budget.
The packet behind that is just um some more information, um it's an updated grant workbook. Um it shows what we've built through the end of July, the payments we received through the nineteenth and then the amounts that we're serving and coming.
Um we understand that you guys are processing an amendment grant, um and that that should be in place by early September, is that the timeframe you're thinking?
At the earliest, it can be as, if we do a regular meeting, it would be the seventeenth, otherwise it would be, if you have a special meeting on the thirteenth, it'd be the first day you could have it.
Of September.
Right.
There's an amendment that you want us to do for you.
You have, you have.
You know where, she knows where the money's going next.
Okay, but no, I have a question on that, um because what was approved before, right? Was the hundred and fifteen thousand that they were gonna give, when they did the one fifty five and then the one fifteen.
Oh, wait, can we, I just ask one question, are we talking about the amendment or we're talking about the current budget status? The current budget?
I'm talking about the five hundred thousand that they approved to give you. Okay. And so you already received a hundred fifty five thousand of that, you received an advance of revenue of one seventy seven, which was not part of that. And that's as you bring it in. Situation, um so anyway. What I've been instructed was the one fifteen, what the end of September, the December thirtieth and March thirtieth. So for this one, I just need to know where you want that hundred and fifteen thousand, and if you can get that to me today, then I can get that with this.
Want line items, we want that hundred and fifteen in, is that your question?
Yes. Because I got it for like your total budget. We're not putting money in, we don't appropriate revenue, it is in the handbook that should not be done. So I need to know where you want this hundred and fifteen thousand that will be on this amendment.
I guess I'm confused by the question, so you're gonna have to bear with me a moment, um.
The line item.
We're not used to allocating county dollar to a specific line item, so that's a new question.
No, that's, you know, you do every time you guys fill out your budget, that's allocating it to specific line items.
Well, we've never told you which specific line items should be county dollar or our our dollar. We, our revenues are all included, we never specifically.
It was done with revenue being appropriated and it's not supposed to have revenue appropriated. So with the dollars, I need to know where those dollars are showing through.
And we're going to extend.
Right, okay, and then as you bring it in and stuff, then. You know, your revenue, then we'll make it great and bring it through and stuff, and part of that um will be easier to do because. In the initial budget, it had seven hundred and ninety thousand, so we'll be able to pull that through for you as it comes in after you sort of go past the one seventy seven. You haven't done that yet, you will be, but you have not done that yet, so. That'll be, at that point in time will be it, okay, where do you want us to move those and appropriate those or not?
When you get to the end of the stuff, you're gonna talk about that.
I've got taxes with Jill all day, things have to be out, so that's not gonna happen this afternoon. Um basically, I just need your hundred and fifteen thousand, where you want us to put those numbers.
Where did you put the hundred and fifty five? Where did you allocate?
We put it in the numbers that Alex and Brenna and Val had put on in March, those were where it was dispersed. At that point in time, Alex said that his board and whoever had said that we were not to get another. Um budget from you guys, and so. We just had it and divided it down as far as we could to get the money.
You just divided it out.
Yeah, yeah, I'm where he had the line items.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that and get that back to you this afternoon.
That'd be great, thank you.
The other question that you guys have had was on. Um allocation, that there are not enough dollars allocated into the salary line item and into the. Excuse me, the fringe line item. Taking. I've been a drink of water, sorry. Sound like an old man with a team maker. Um, so uh we we met with. Brenna had met with you guys a a couple of weeks ago, we met with Richard last week, we were gonna meet with you guys yesterday to talk about it, but that may not gonna happen, so we're just trying to. Figure out, um you guys have allocated that the original budget of eight hundred thousand dollars, you've allocated that down. Um into quarterly basis, right? With the one fifty five of county dollar and then a fourth of our revenues are in on a quarterly basis.
We had ten, the five hundred thousand, so we have the one fifty five, the one fifteen, three more times.
Correct.
Okay, the one seventy seven is not part of that, the one seventy seven was just an example of advance as you were.
On our revenues.
On your revenues.
Yeah.
But that's only as it was coming in.
Right, that the one seventy seven is a portion of our revenue, that a portion of our revenue that we need to bring in.
So when you bring in, it will go right over to you.
You are basing our revenue on that eight hundred thousand dollar budget. Correct?
You are, yes.
Right, because that's how the year started. Now, we came in to you guys in May of last year and we agreed to up your money and then that allowed us up our revenues, which aren't showing in our current. The higher level of revenue that we need to earn and the actual expenditures that we're making, because we did not lay off staff. Based on the fact that you guys were not going to to um go with the one fifty five, that you allow us the five hundred thousand, so we did not lay off. And we started the year as though we are working on our amended budget of one point three million. And the budget itself is divided into. The eight hundred thousand dollar budget, so there's less, there's less expenses than what we need.
It was. I'm gonna do a math here real quick, cause you just said one point three, your numbers came in higher, it was one point two million and nine thousand. It was a seven hundred and nine thousand dollars that you guys had shown that you were gonna do revenue and they never agreed to give you that, those dollars as county funds. Five hundred thousand is what they agreed to give you as county funds.
Right, but when you, when you process this amendment.
A.
A total budget is one three seven four, when this amendment is processed. That's the amount that you've approved for us for the year, that's what we're telling you, we're going to be spending. And your revenue of five hundred thousand and our revenue of eight hundred and some thousand is what's gonna support that. Correct? We're all on the same thing?
No, we're not, I don't know where you're getting the one point three million.
That's the amendment that we just handed you.
But they never approved this amendment that you're saying. You're saying you're gonna bring in the revenue and that's great. And I understand what you're, what you're trying, you're explaining that you're gonna bring in this more revenue, okay. Last year you brought in approximately eight hundred and twelve thousand, you have one more grant, that's about fifty seven thousand is what you said, correct? You also lost a hundred and ten thousand of your revenue, that was Matthew Scott's.
Right, and the additional revenue that we're gonna bring in this year is student emergency preparedness.
Okay.
So that's.
But that's also money that has to stay with like you or Belinda or Amanda.
Or the people who are earning it, which will be the rest of the staff in public health, they're all going to be doing more work in that grant than they've done before. And that's in our explanation that we provided you back in.
Right, right. I guess, I I every time I see something from you, there's more revenue that's gonna be coming in and that's great. But they're, they're not responsible.
Absolutely.
At county funds to be bringing that or allocating that over anything, so.
But in order for us to operate, Amy, we have to have a budget line item that we can anticipate funds are available at, we're gonna earn our share, you're gonna.
And as you bring in your revenue, it'll get sold over to that, so you can utilize those lines, it's just, right now. We're approximately, we're about seventy thousand or a little bit more than that that they brought in this fiscal year.
It was the fifty seven the other day and then. And we have thirty three thousand to deposit today, so that's.
Good, is that, how much of that to bet?
I think that's what I won't respect this one, so part of this. A bets is five hundred thousand dollars of our revenue, we do understand that.
I do understand.
So we're eight hundred thousand and five hundred thousand of this bet, so a portion of that money is going to be spent out, but it is going to be a very large portion of our revenue. My point here, I guess, that I struggling to make is that. The budget that we proposed to you for the amendment that we brought in to you was one point four million uh in June, we're down to one point three something with all muster funds that we're gonna bring in. So we set up our expenditures based on that, our our staff is based on that, our. The the plans that we have for projects, all of it's based on that amount of money. Um what we're used to seeing and in in last year is that the beginning of the year, that whole budget is present, right, it's all there. When we look at our budget, the line items, it's the same as what we brought to you, it would say one point three whatever at the bottom. Right, at the end of our budget, so what's happened with this was. You're raising up five hundred thousand of the money that you're putting in, but you you, there aren't enough expenses in the right line items. For this first period to get, so we have red line items coming up for salary and for insurance. We told you at the beginning of the year that those line items weren't gonna be accurate, Amy, we were trying to have that conversation with you. And we said these aren't gonna be in the right spots.
Right.
And you said, no worries.
How is it department and management? I did not say no worries.
Okay, sorry.
But what I said was the salaries cannot go over what the FIC and the IFRS have, you cannot. You can't be shifting everything around continually, it's gotta stay in the, the way it can go red at all. Is if it's in the same service, the same fund, and then it's, it's not recommended, you can't shift numbers around. But nothing that can touch salary, nothing that can touch their FIC and IFRS or their house insurance. And the bets grant money has to stay, the the money needs to stay with the grants and the areas to.
It does, but the amount of money that's been allocated in the bets is hundred thirty some thousand dollars, we only need nine in this first period. And how? And there's forty thousand dollars there that.
But we can't move it out of that.
And and can you explain to me why?
Because we cannot legally move them from line item to line item, the funds is already there. We can add to different line items, but he didn't have originally hardly anything in the bets, you wouldn't have any money there. We knew that you guys were, had a pass through with it.
That's what I was gonna ask, you said we were gonna go on this bet square. Uh we wouldn't be getting anything this month, is is this thing a twelve month deal or is it run?
Every three months.
Nine months.
We have, we have revenue coming this month, we build every month, the revenue will be deposited today, it's past the accounts payable stage, so we won't be able to pay out those. Until the next account.
But but the debts, do we get paid monthly on this? Yeah, plus the other counties get paid monthly too.
Yes. We like to pay it out the same month it's received, so that we keep it clean and we know the monies are never supported. So why do we get more than the other counties to share? For the bets. We provide a project made up for a twelve county region. So basically, the other counties get a percentage? The other counties, everyone is paid based on the work that they do. Mills County employees will get paid, if we weren't running this grant, we would be doing the work that the brand requiring. And our our staff is doing that work, they build the work and then they get, we we get reimbursed for that. So that the work that we're doing to complete all of the performance measures um are reimbursed. So what we do is we hired staff to grant coordinators, which are required by the brand, okay, to um help all of both counties. Be successful in completing those performance measures. Um so we get reimbursed for all of the costs of those people, a hundred percent of those costs come back to us. We also.
Not all of it, we get, if you get a hundred in, a hundred doesn't go out, it's not all just passed, there's there's some management.
Well.
Administration fees that we can keep.
We can, we also try, we can keep a ten percent administration fee on top of that.
Do you explain this to us when you first started it?
We did, we did, we, the grant itself is five hundred plus thousand dollars, we get forty eight thousand in administrative fees if all the dollars are spent. We only get to claim if those monies are spent and traditionally, they don't spend all the dollars, but we have the budget as though it will be spent. So um we are gonna claim forty eight thousand in administrative fees if all the dollars are spent, and that's just free money, that just comes back. Um on top of all of our costs, we we charge the grant for the two grant coordinators, we'll charge the grant for my fiscalization fees. So my twenty hours a week to run that program is billed fully to that grant. So every month, at the end of the month, I'm just right now preparing July billing, it will be filed at the end of August. So we're about two months in arrears, the you know, the work happens in July, we build the end of August, the check comes in late September, it's traditionally the timeline. So the checks that we're getting right now in July were made, in Au- in August will be June reimbursements. So we made, in in the past few years, Mills County has not fully um done the work. That our county as one of twelve counties who do and build as many hours to that grant as we could develop. So my plan for this year is that we've, we've got trains and exercises set up for all staff and so we'll be billing more dollars back for everyone. That, um and it's not an additional cost to the agency because the staff are already employed, we're just using them to complete the performance measures of that project. So we'll be bringing back in the forty eight thousand in. Well, actually, all will be paying out in um projects is about two hundred ninety one thousand dollars, that's the only payout amount that we expect. And that's the amount we put in. That's how they got in trouble.
Two ninety one.
Yes, yes, the rest stays here. That's how they got in trouble last year, they weren't using the bits. No, no, last year, I think the issues with the budget last year, Carol, were just due to the fact that administrators had left. And the people that were left managing just didn't really have the knowledge they needed to to understand what was happening with the budget. We we brought in six hundred, you know, we brought in, we used six hundred thousand of yours, we did six twelve, and we, I think, used six or two, so.
You've been in terms of bills, but we have that discussion. You've been in terms of bills, but we have that discussion coming. They held bills that covered that amount, so that was spent.
Well, we deposited more money than was needed last year because we gave you back ten thousand dollars of yours, that was unspent. Regardless of how that happened.
You spent it the next year out of this budget immediately. You had bills that were, we had late fees on because you, they were not brought in, correct? It was not ten thousand nine hundred, ten thousand nine hundred and some dollars, if it was ten thousand two hundred that you said you had left.
Well, we were trying to balance it. Our ideal would have been to deposit exactly what we needed to pay all the bills, but it was difficult to know what revenues would be coming at the end of the year. So we did hold some payments because we didn't want to overspend. You're right. So at this point, we, we earned, we didn't make you short last year, Carol, we didn't. But the confusion with the budget was just due to lack of understanding. And we're clear now, we've got a clear understanding of what's going to happen. I'm going to be honest, I'm really, I'm confused and I have years of experience with public health budgeting. I'm confused in with what you are asking us to do with our budget as far as assigning. Basically, you're just saying where do we want the additional dollars to go into the line items?
You need to tell us what line items you want and how much dollar, how many, how much.
So you probably got to go into a lot of the administration fees, the salaries.
Well, salaries is the biggest thing, is what we do, that's the most, the largest thing.
Now they go higher like that more.
The problem that we have currently with the way the budget is set up today, the bottom line is not, we're not going to spend what that bottom line says by the end of September. We're not going to be close to that. But the breakout of the dollars is not in the correct line item. There's not enough in salary line item, there's not enough in fringe line item. There's too much in other line items such as emergency preparedness. We don't need that much right now in that fund. We will by the end of the year, but right now, we don't. So there is more in other line items and not enough in funds.
But isn't the Bets grant, by understanding what from Maria, is that money supposed to stay with the Bets?
I'm sorry, Maria?
Maria's fee.
Oh, okay.
Is that that money is supposed to stay in, within that grouping? So it doesn't matter as long, because you have salary line items for Bets also.
We do, and we're not saying we should change those. No, those are fine.
But that was, that's where that money is where it's at, because you have more than a percent of those.
Well, those dollars are not going to be spent this quarter. I, I guess I am incorrect if I'm wrong, I'm having trouble getting what you're telling.
Well, what I'm.
I'm, we're looking at the amount of money that's in this current budget should be allocated and, and you asked Amy to bring you down, we brought down at the beginning of the year where we thought the, the line item money should be.
Right, we couldn't move them because it, it would be better established.
Right.
When they gave us their lines.
But that's where we, the dollar isn't where we need it to be. So how do we get the dollar where we need it to be?
Well, it should have happened in March when we asked.
Well, we can't fix March.
I know, is that?
So how do we fix?
But that's just.
We do.
The only way.
We do the amendment.
Well, we are, we can't move it from line to line. But the amendment, the amendment that we're doing, it doesn't happen quickly enough. Initially, you guys had told us the amendment would happen in July and you have really great reasons for not doing it in that timeframe and we don't have a problem with that. But that's created this issue. And we personally don't know how to fix it because we, we, if you're telling us we can't move line items.
Right.
And we, and we, then we don't know what to do.
One fifteen that they're going to be giving you for this amendment if you need to put it where you need it for the line items. And then bring in new revenue and as you're bringing in the revenues, say, hey, we need this here, 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 here. And that's on the plan sheet that they would, they would say where it goes.
Are you doing this for every department, is it this difficult for everybody?
Everybody doesn't deal with the grants and the revenue that you have coming in.
But this is the one, and I'm trying to understand why it has to be this.
It's the way that it's supposed to be in the handbook for everything on, on revenue. It's not appropriated. Last year, the excuse was, well, it shows we have all this money, we have all this money. No, you don't, this was what you, your wish list, you said you were going to bring in, that you did not bring in the dollars. And you kept saying, well, it shows it right here, it shows it.
Well, Amy, I'm sorry, we're trying to move on past that.
Well, we do need to know. Right, we're trying to make sure you understand, these are the dollars the county has agreed to give you. And as long as you're bringing your revenue that you say repeatedly that you're going to be bringing in, you will be fine.
So at this point, you have, you set up the budget based on a specific amount of revenue and the county funds, but the division into line items is what's inaccurate. And you're telling us we can't change the line?
You can't move it out of the line item.
Then I don't see a solution for that.
The only way that we can move it.
We can lay off every person today.
We need money today than there.
We can lay off every person today and we still have to pay out bennies and all of that, you're still going to be in the red. There's, we, I don't, we don't know how to fix this for you. There are other counties who, who receive, say, Pot County receives sixty percent of their total allotment at the beginning of the year and then in January, they go in and negotiate for what else is needed. Other counties receive a hundred percent of their budget upfront.
Right, a lot of their budgets are like two hundred thousand that they're getting, that they're getting maybe a hundred.
Um, I guess my point is, is that there are various counties in our area.
And they're not doing the revenues, they're getting what the counties are handing out.
No, their budgets show everything. Their budgets show sixty percent of their total budget dropped in at the beginning of the year. Or they show a hundred.
There's a percent of different items.
I can give you a list of counties today, but I talked with them, everyone is showing, I get a hundred percent of my revenue, my budget lined up, just like ours has always been.
That's not at all what we were told to do when we were.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to fix it. If we can't change line items, I don't, I don't know what we can do at this point. What is your suggestion?
So the state auditor is the one that is frowning on, can't be switching numbers.
When it's, when it's placed into the line item, the department of management, that's where it needed a state, so that was the initial. Okay, most of those line items have already gone down. So there's not, when Jolene and I sat in here with you, with Richard and Jill, and you were going through line items, you didn't have a lot of money that you could have moved anyway because you guys were all going to be spending it on other things.
Emergency preparedness is the only really heavy line.
Correct.
Emergency preparedness is the one line. You have the, you have the more money to understand how to spend it.
And at that time, it was like that's, that was the one, we can't move it, you agreed, correct? Okay.
Well, we don't agree that you can't move it, you're the one saying.
No, she agreed when she was in here, you were with us. And Richard was there and Jill was there.
I'm not really interested in she saying that, I guess what I'm telling you is we have no reason that that dollar couldn't be moved at this point in time. We don't need it in this line item right now, we need it here now. What happens with this amendment, when this amendment goes through, we're just going to, you're going to add what? What will change in our budget? Nothing, it's still the same number?
No, you'll have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars added to it.
And then as we get revenue, we just tell you, add it here and here and here.
What's your path for one seventy seven? Yeah, you tell us where it needs to go and we're going.
I'm really struggling with why other counties aren't dealing with what we're dealing with, with this budget situation. With, what you're asking us to do, Amy, is not what the majority of counties.
Because you want to take money from here, it's kind of like you're robbing Peter to pay Paul all the time from different funds and, and line items. And we're saying we need to have it clear. This is, I mean, it's, I guess, I feel like we're just keep saying the same thing over and over. Regardless, they just said five hundred thousand, but that was what they were giving you. You're wanting them to say, here is all this money. Last year, when they had done that in previous years, that means that they are stopped paying the one point seven million or whatever they. Well, they shouldn't be.
We've also given you a revenue, we've also given you a document here that shows we don't, we've not cost you extra money. In the past several years, we've not cost you any extra money. This feels to me like this is a choice that you are making and that there are some options that you guys will. If other counties can, can open up their line items and say, it's fifty percent of the year, you can have access to fifty percent of your dollar in each of the line items you said you'd spend it. Half of our money and half of yours will be coming in.
They were revenue access to a quarter of it at a quarter of a year and then they give you a fifty. But the next time, you would have had another quarter.
Our budgets may never be successful when it's pinched in our dollars that are not allocated.
You're wanting a hundred percent of everything.
I don't, I really only want fifty, just maybe fifty to get started in the year.
You're already with the one fifteen.
If they were into it fifty. And what, right now, we live in this conversation with you today.
No, I understand, if that's what you wanted, where you wasted the money last year, nobody knew what was going on, then you would be happy. It's like, as you have been saying over and over, how they want you to keep the homemakers, but that's not looked out on the, on the street. It's all getting value to these guys and they've never said get rid of these people, never have I heard them say that.
How do we move forward, Amy, with you not being upset about what happened eight months ago? How do we?
Well, how do we move forward with you guys actually bringing in the actual revenue that you say you're going to?
We're doing everything they can to bring revenue. We've brought, we've brought the reports the last two months to show you what we're building.
Because you got your first quarter, July one, okay, of the money. Now you're going to have your second, so that's fifty percent of what you said you needed. And now you're saying that, well, we need, we need more than that, then you go back and say, well, no, fifty percent is fine.
That's all that's ever at the bottom is fine, Amy. Three hundred and some, that's there is fine for this quarter of time, we don't have any problem with that. What we do have a problem with is the line items.
You have enough money, just not in the right way.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't, well, she says we set the line items.
You did.
Brenna didn't set the line items.
Brenna did it with Alex and Val.
The line, the line items we brought you based on a budget of eight hundred thousand dollars. Not right, one, not one point three, whatever. We're, we're operating at a higher level than this budget is set up on.
And that's due to some hires that we, you know.
Here we kept telling you that, don't hire, don't hire.
And we, we lost two nurses, Carol, we can't run a health department without a nurse.
You have a nurse?
We just hired one, so rather than two, we have no nurses on staff, not a woman.
So the, the one you hired last week.
Replace the two.
We don't, we don't. We haven't had two in a long time.
Okay.
We have lost two, we lost Lori last year, then we lost Valerie in April.
Right.
And we just added back one.
Okay.
So we, we're not building up our nursing department, we're just leaning a bare minimum requirement. We, we can't run a nursing, a public health department without a nurse. We hired, we've just lost two home care aides, we've hired one and then we have another pending hire to replace those people. We're not adding any physicians, the only physician that's been added is Mark.
Okay.
Which is reimbursed by the grid. Not costing any of them.
So how do you guys, which we hear from the other departments, and some of them want to quit because Brenna now is making seventy eight thousand and come from other departments are going, what the hell, I'm not even making seventy eight thousand.
Do you know what, Carol, I totally hear that. Do you know what, I hear that concern, what I'll, will tell you.
So you guys, even the board, they've got to be in connection with the other departments is what I'm asking.
See, one of the challenges is, is that the board of health is the one who approves and sets those wages. You don't have to be happy with them, I totally get that. Richard can share that with the board of health, if he's not happy with them, you can share that with the board of health if you're unhappy with them.
And Carrie, I have, I was back in October of last year, I started saying, you know, this doesn't look good. We've worked through several months, I can remember it, whether it was in the May meeting or the June meeting where we started hiring, we hired Brenna, we hired Alex, we hired another person, I said right there, I said, folks, the money is not in the budget right now. And no one paid any attention, none of the board members said a word. Janet Wade looked at me like, oh, they say it's okay, they say it's okay. Well, somebody has got to take some leadership role out. I don't care who it is, somebody's got to step up and say, okay, where are we at? And no one seems to want to do that, you know. I, I think the main problem is, is, no offense to no one, but the leadership fell off when, when our directors and stuff took back other jobs, left, you know, because they got offered better jobs, okay? And I don't think that we put the right person in to handle this, you know. A lot of leadership things didn't take place that should have. And it's come to a head now, we got to try and do something with it. What, I don't know. You would like to move money from one table to another table to use? Whether we can do that through an amendment or not, I don't know. I know you have money in there. You know, and, and I thought the board of health understood that we, we cut back some money this year on this. We didn't, you're going to get five hundred thousand from the county, plus some other money and you keep telling us we're going to get grant money in, grant money in, it's a fight. But we're still with statement, how do we keep enough money in our salary line? Keep you guys both.
The problem that we have right now, Richard, is not because we're mismanaging or misspending or making errors on our side. Amy may not agree with that, however, the budget that we've lined up, we are, we are existing within. We have revenues to support the budget that we've set up, our revenues do not come in on a, on a monthly basis in a neatly divided package. It doesn't work that way. We've given you a sheet of paper here that shows you the disparities of how our revenues come in. We have some months that are very shy, we have other months that are very large, we don't have the ability to our grants, we may have projects that we do more one month, less another. The grant, maybe a grant funder pays late, maybe, maybe someone was sick in the grant, how we didn't have the money that was supposed to. Our revenues vary month to month. The budget I am used to running is a twelve month budget where we obligate, this is what we're going to bring you in, we monitor it closely, we make sure that we're staying in the safe range, we know that we're billing appropriately and our revenues come in over time. There are times we might spend more county money and at times we might be, be less, depending on how the revenues are coming in. But at the end of the year, it balances. The budget that we have set up is a sound one. The problem we have right now is not a lack of total funds, it's a lack of funds in the right line items. Those line items were set up last March based on a budget that isn't even what we're doing today. And Richard, I think you told me that you are the one who really encouraged that we would go to like a twenty five percent access.
Well, I thought this was, this would help us get some control.
Well, but it's.
Because I had, keep people complaining to me, okay, you put up all this money on July one to support a health, you know, a million some dollars. We put that up front, you guys would go and you would work off of county money, then you would get down to a point where, oh, we're
It's tight.
going to have to get tight here. You know, and when it come down to it, the county was supporting at least eighty percent of public health, you know. Figures will prove it over the past few years back, you know. So I thought, well, we will, let's budget this out. You know, let's, let's give us twenty five percent, you know, we gave you that much and then the payments, you know.
What other county do you know that gives their public health a half a million dollars? Tell me another county.
There is a couple other places, but I have to look that up for you.
The county which is three times bigger.
I called all of them.
And that says, there is no way that they give that much to Pot County Health.
They got eight hundred and some thousand.
They, the county doesn't give them that much.
I believe they do. I talked with Maria, let me, let me find that for you.
Great store.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll find that for you.
That's, that's not our problem, what county gives what, we, we had to fix our problem we have here.
We do, unbelievable.
We, we have to look and see if we can, I don't know, who do we look to? Total revenue part, call the state, see what we can do as far as moving money from a county to a county or not?
If we, if we move it out of there, but we can take it out of beds up there, that's, we'll find out, I don't know. I mean, I would.
I, I don't know either, we've never done it, never had to, so.
We have to, well, let's get a concrete. We have to lay out, right now, we don't need that money there, we need that money in other places. When we pay out that money, we will have the money to pay it, it comes in and we pay it out. We don't need it right now, it's way over budgeted for this period of time. We're looking, I guess I'm looking at this budget that you set up for us as getting us through to October first.
No, we, we didn't set the budget up, we told you what we would give you and you generally took it, or the health department would take it and adjust it accordingly. And that's the way it worked out. My version is we're awful top heavy on, on salaries. That's only me, but, you know, we've hired a lot more people here in the last, I don't know, hired or just transferred around.
We just moved.
You know, moved people around, put in higher wages. And I think somebody should have done a lot more figuring on what it was going to cost, you know. At one night, you, you spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in changing people around. And I said.
Well, you were already obligated though, in that night, I don't know what night, are you talking about the night that Brenna's, Brenna's?
Yeah, Brenna was promoted and Alex and.
Brenna was already employed at the agency making a wage. Brenna was already employed at the agency, making a wage. The amount, additional, there's a small amount additional. No, it's a lot of additional. Alex is additional. I am the only truly add-on.
But you're, you're paid by that grant, so it really doesn't count. You know, you're part-time.
Richard, I, we are not in this position today because we're misspending. We're spending according to what our budget outlined, is that we would spend it. We're in this position because our budget is, has been set up based on last March's numbers, which is not what we're working with today. There's twenty-five percent, basically a fourth of it with a little extra on the top. But how those line items are broken down, what is the problem? It's not that we don't have enough money. We're completely underspent from where we're, we, we need to be in a three-month period. We're not overspent. We're underspent in, in with what we have available at this point. We're not overspending our budget. The lines are not in the right places. So the choices that I see are, you know, and Richard, if you, you have valid concerns you want to share with the Board of Health, share them. If, if the Board of Health, as you were pointing, you've appointed a new member, you'll be appointing a couple more. I'm sure that we'll have, have discussions on, on how things are going and how we're moving forward and, and what changes we need to see to stay viable. Um, the problem we have today can only be fixed if we move a line item or you guys allocate, open up and let us say, okay, we'll, we'll put in six months' worth of money. We're not gonna spend, we're only gonna spend what we're.
That's what they're giving you during the quarter, so then you would have fifty percent of what they promised.
But not, not in a timeframe that fixes this problem. This problem, according to Jolene, is, is critical with the next payroll. She's telling us she's not gonna be able to pay to do our payroll. So for me, that's a critical problem. That's a critical problem, and it's gonna happen a week from this Friday. Next week, on Friday, when she pushes send on payroll, she's saying she can't pay us. Because there's not enough money to pay the fringe benefits and to pay payroll.
In the line item.
In the line item. There is money in the overall budget. We are under-expended from what that money is. There's plenty of money. It's not that. It's that it's not in the right line item.
So how much, I'll make some calls.
There's gotta be one to fix it.
How much would you want moved if it's even legal to do it? Because if it's not legal, we're not doing it. But if it's legal.
Well, I want you to, if it's not legal.
But if it's legal, out of the vet's grant, which is what, that's not supposed to be ours.
I have a couple piles. I'm just gonna look at your documents, I'll make sure we're looking at the right numbers here. There's forty-five thousand that you can shift easily.
Forty-five thousand.
In that line item.
And you know what you're?
And forty-five thousand is laying where? That you can shift it to?
It's an emergency preparedness, but we don't need it right now.
Okay.
We'll need it later, but we don't need it now.
And you would switch it into the salaries.
And you guys know how much you spend every pay period on salaries?
I don't have that number in front of me right now.
Do you, Brenna? Well, let me go get their presentation.
I'll go ahead.
There's, there's almost enough for the payroll, but it's, it was the fringe that was gonna be the problem.
Then after.
How much is in the payroll line for it?
Twelve is in some of the payroll line.
Right.
The twenty-two, eight, we have twenty-seven, eight. And we have a negative. A negative. There's thirteen, a negative fourteen, six, and a negative thirteen, five. Thirteen fifteen. So how do negative sixteen on that?
Hi there. How can I help you today?
Okay. If we make phone calls and find that it's legal to move any money out of beds, I was asking what their salary lines are right now and what they're spending every pay period for salaries.
Okay, so why do we want to move money out of the beds line?
Yeah, okay, so.
We don't. They do.
Why don't we leave one of those dollars so that you don't run red collars? Okay, so where are you, so you need to. You've got Fund O-1,000, and which is general basic, and you got Fund O-2,000, which is general supplemental. And Fund O-1,000 is your salary and all of your other expenses. And Fund O-2,000 is FICA, IFRS, and health insurance. So you have, so when you do your budgets, you're supposed to set what everybody's salaries are. Then we take the percentage back in March, and then you set your percentages for your FICA and your IFRS, and what health insurance that people take. So those are the numbers that offset, that make your general supplemental. Uh, moving numbers, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, moving numbers. And when a budget is set, you cannot change your budgeted amount, numbers in the funds that are budgeted, unless you have a budget amendment or a budget, I think it's called appropriation. I would have to look that up. There's only, I can't remember for sure that number. We, there's only two options. You guys are being allowed to do a budget amendment of a hundred and fifteen thousand, is that correct? Get your, get, get your numbers in and put them where you want them. Why do you wanna, what's the point of moving? Get those numbers in.
It's gonna be done in time to fix your problem.
Why not?
They, they're gonna process them in in 2018, that's a hundred.
And.
It's not, as we have to have in the paper.
Right, I'm, I'm not saying it's a fault, I'm just saying.
I do believe it's your Fund O-2,000 that you're down to twelve thousand dollars. You have added, so your payroll, um, every, for, for August 2nd and August 16th, was sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. That is two, for two payrolls. In the month of August, we have three payrolls. So the third payroll in August, we call it the quote-unquote free payroll, because there's no insurance taken out of it. However, Uncle Sam always gets nurse money, so there's always FICA and IFRS. So you have added a nurse, uh, at thirty-six something hour, um.
Then we replaced a home care aide. We lost two.
And so, we're not, I don't, I didn't pay those people last, in August, so I'm just gonna add. So you added a nurse at thirty-six an hour, you added a homemaker at eighteen an hour. So there, every two weeks is, the nurse is gonna be two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight, four dollars and eighty-six cents. You got FICA, two twenty, sixty-nine, IFRS, two seventy-two, thirty-three. So for one pay period, or what we're gonna need at the end of August, is three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, eighty-eight cents. Then you guys should have all this.
We do. We just don't have it in our papers right here. If you had all this, you need a calculator, I can do it right now for you, but I don't have that in my head right now.
You should have all this. Cassie Kenny is one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Her FICA is gonna be one hundred and ten, sixteen, one thirty-five, ninety-four is her IFRS. So that's one thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and ten cents. So you're averaging three, four. You added about five thousand dollars to that thirty-six thousand, so you're gonna need forty-one thousand dollars. And you're going to need, uh, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine, thirty, and two thousand, four hundred and four. So let's round that up to two and two, so you're gonna need forty-five hundred in your Fund O-2,000. So we, all the other departments, no one's allowed to go over their salary lines. No one. You guys have. So you can cover the Fund O-1,000 with anything in Fund O-1,000. It's your O-2,000s. So we don't have to have, so what you have to have is going to be about five thousand for August 30th. You got twelve thousand, that'll put you down to somewhere between seven and eight. I don't know if you can make it. I haven't gone that far. I just, I don't know if you can make it September 13th. That is something, um.
We think we can obviously go on September. That's what we figured out. By the first payroll of September, we would be in trouble.
So if you could get your budget amendment done before the 13th, before.
As soon as, because it, you have to go to the papers today, or first thing in the morning, it's gotta be in there before the four-thirty on Wednesday. The time they publish it, that's as soon as we can have any kind of.
Amendment.
Amendment, or budget here, and we have to. Legal was not loving for, this is.
And that's two weeks for public hearing.
Right.
Like if somebody's got a problem with it.
I, I haven't.
They want to push it out.
Can I figure the numbers down? It would be very, very close. You might make it. Because we won't have to pay the health insurance, which is gonna be about, uh, seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay.
We would pay a little bit of it for those in the HSA that come out of cycle one, but the majority of it comes out of cycle two, which would be September 27th. I have not taken the time due to taxes and other stuff that we're doing at the end of the year to see how far you can make it. Now, we could talk to Mike Alloway. I'm sure he's gonna say, you're gonna have to furlough some people until you get your money. If you don't have money, you have to furlough. We, we cannot take money and switch it from Fund O-1,000 to Fund O-2,000. There's not an auditor across the state that's gonna tell you you can do that without. There's two ways you can do that. Budget amendment and the budget, I can't think of the name. I think it's appropriations, but I'm not positive.
So between.
Those are the, between your line items and your same fund, normally we don't, our, no other department goes over their salary line. That's just public health.
Or over our salary line because it's set up all the way set.
I know, I, it doesn't, sometimes it's just, I have other departments that their budgets got cut. And every department I reach out to before July 1, a couple times, Jill can vouch for this. And I said, this is your numbers in your salary lines, this is your FICA IFRS. I reached out to everybody. People have had to make cuts. Because with House, House File 718.
Totally understand.
We had, the county had to get cuts here on certain percentages of what you can raise for your general budget, uh, your supplemental, your basic, your rural. And then they had a public hearing for the budgets, and the people spoke and said, you need to cut budgets. So they went back in and they cut it again. I've got people that have had to, other departments, who have had to cut hours because they stay in their salary lines. So I, we can work on the numbers, but the first thing I would recommend, did you today bring your numbers for the hundred and fifteen thousand? So she can get that in the paper, and we can get that.
We didn't on that one. We brought, we brought an amendment to you, but it's the amendment for our total annual budget, which is what we would normally do. We would not normally bring you an amendment.
But you basically.
So you're going to.
But, okay, wait a second. Wait, wait a second. Can I just ask a quick question?
No, just a second. So the board would have to do a budget amendment for your revenues because they were not done. So you're asking the board to give you a million dollars. That's what it would have to be. Uh, you want, what did you say?
One point three.
One, you, so the board would have to explain to the community why they're, and that's not, we can't even let it. So it's for the taxes. It would have to go into the reserve for one point three million dollars, and that's what you've had.
Can I just point out, we've not left you short once in the past.
Sherry, you don't understand, it, they, they would have to, that's, that's not your money. That's the taxpayer money.
It is. Then, what I'm saying is, you're the ones who are changing the method. The method has always been, we will drop your money in at the beginning of the year. Here's your total budget, just like you do for every other department.
And I have been told, every other department is set up differently, and they all save in their lines. I have been told that you don't always bring in the money, and, and I also, regardless, regardless. No, we do not need to sit down. Brenna's the director over there for the admin.
Is there anything else?
Maybe, thank you. Okay, so.
Well, I would say we try and get this amendment done as soon as possible for the three hundred and forty-five thousand. You know, we've talked about this extra million or whatever we're contemplating here. I have no idea. I don't think the lady sitting in the back of the room is going to.
We're sitting with two million.
Anything.
In our bucket.
You know, uh.
We're not asking you, Richard, for one point three million dollars. We're asking for the five hundred that you committed. And then to let us spend any of that money.
You're asking for the one point three, one point four, whatever it is.
As a total budget. With us bringing it in.
The way that you want it to show on your books is them giving you all that money until you bring it in. That's not what's gonna happen.
If we, how do we get them in the right line item? Amy, what, how do we fix it?
We've already, we've already explained this over and over.
So how do we fix it?
When Brenna brings it over, and she will say what line items she wants them in.
How do we fix it for Jolene for the six period of time? So all we have to do is bring you the amended budget within it. Can I, I have one quick question I need to clarify for me. You're amending for an additional a hundred and fifteen thousand in funding for us, right? That's what you're doing? Are you gonna amend again in three months for the next a hundred and fifteen, and again in three months for the other?
I have a call out to see if we can do it as one amendment that shows the date that the money will be coming in.
Okay. So you're gonna do it all at once?
We've been talking about doing an amendment for the three hundred and forty-five thousand, subject to payment of a hundred and fifteen thousand on September 30th. Uh, September, then it goes to December, and then it goes to March. Who you working on on this? I'm just talking to Amy about it.
Yeah.
You know?
Carol, this is my, this is my text from Marie's on the budget. Um, this is a whole new method of operating, correct, Richard?
Well.
You and I have been doing this for a long time. This is a whole new way of operating. Is this your choice of how to do it? Is it, can you make a different choice, and you don't want to make a different choice? I know Park County gets sixty percent of their money upfront. Can you do that?
Well, you, of, of the five hundred thousand that we offered, you know, you're going to be, you've already got a hundred and fifteen of it. And that plus one fifty-five, you know, it's got that first of July.
Right. The, what, the problem here is that it's not in the right line. We can tell you where we need it, Amy. We can tell you where we need all of these dollars, plus a hundred and fifteen. Is that what you need from us?
Yes.
Right. We're gonna do the one fifteen and then do the other, but do the one fifteen.
We're trying, we're trying to put it together so we do one amendment here. Not coming back in thirty days, or ninety days, then come back in ninety days. No. We wanna make an amendment of three hundred and forty-five.
Okay.
But we only want to expand a hundred and fifteen on the 30th of September, December 30th, March 30th. And then you have your five hundred thousand.
And basically, isn't it under the salaries that you'll need?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I don't think there'd be that big of a problem to put it in that line item.
No, we'll just have to go back through and figure out where they need to go, um, as closely as we can estimate. The challenge for us is when we're, so basically, we're looking at a six-month period, and you're asking us to budget without our revenue. Right?
No, I'm asking you to bring in your revenue, and you already got a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of your revenue.
But you're not, are you going to include any additional revenue in this amendment, other than the one fifteen?
The one fifteen is not revenue. That's county money. No. I've not been told to do any of that.
Okay.
Unless, unless these two want to change.
Didn't you tell us, Sherry, what you will bring in every quarter with grant money?
Yes.
Yeah.
The challenge for us is, I'll bet you it'll come in month-to-month at an even level.
No, but she said per quarter.
Yeah.
You got the first quarter. Of the revenue that you said you bring in, of you already have, we, that was already given from the board.
The document that we just gave you. This one, fiscal history. I just, Brenna just handed it with her packet today.
Okay.
It shows how our revenues have been coming in month-to-month. And that, and we are used to operating at a venue where sometimes we pull more county money and sometimes we pull less. And what you're doing is setting us up to a limit, it's to a certain amount of money. And I understand why you're doing that. I think what you're doing is creating hinges that, um, make things really tough.
I think Richard said it very well. It's very salary-heavy, and.
We've always been salary-heavy. We, we operate with people doing.
But it's, it's, it's the, one of the heavy instruments in the county, of departments.
If your goal, Richard, is that we would have less staff, we will have less revenue. That's how it works. Everyone is in revenue. We don't have people, we don't have revenue.
I've worked a lot off of the House file to do when, you know, cutting down budgets, we cut every. We cut everybody's budget. We cut money out of a lot of budgets, took out knickknacks, things, this and that, you know, gathered up a hundred thousand dollars here, a hundred thousand dollars there, but yet it was still savings. It maybe wasn't a lot. Yes, we took some money out of your budget and, uh, I don't know whether it's the way we set it up. I mean, you understood that we were going to get paid accordingly, you know, and we've kind of run into a.
A line item problem.
A line item problem, I guess we can put it that way. If we can fix it with an amendment or a, you know, an adjustment.
Appropriation.
Appropriation, we'll check into it. But, uh, you know, you, you need to bring back where you want us to put this hundred and fifteen thousand to be given.
Okay, so the revenue that we, for that amendment that we brought you today, that shows the total year, what we're planning to spend for a year, you need us to redo based on the amount of money that is in our current budget and then add a hundred and fifteen thousand to it. And tell you what line items we need.
I just need to have the hundred and fifteen thousand, what line items you want me to put it in.
Okay, but we're not in the correct line items for the first batch. Can we just not fix the whole thing while we're adding?
What, I asked you for the one fifteen and then I asked you for a separate, and if we were able to move any of the line, but we can't move like Jolene said, one thousand to two thousand.
That makes sense. I, I hear you.
So that's, so regardless of Mike and I versus still going to be an issue coming up, so.
And the only other option for that is if you guys loosen up on, from a quarterly basis to a six month basis or a four month basis or a bigger spread of dollar that drops temporarily more.
But, but, I guess, when you're saying that, what, what I was trying to say is your first quarter, you got July one, which was the one fifty-five and the one seventy-seven. You've got that. It's showing there.
And, and we're fine with that. We're not spending all that, we'll be fine. It's just not in the right line items.
So your next one, okay, which is what we're looking at right now, is the one fifteen, which is, that's your fifty percent of what they said that they were going to give you. Actually, it's a little bit more than fifty percent because the one fifty-five that aren't been promised, which is why the next three allocations are the one fifteen. So.
Will this one fifteen go to the same line items?
No, go whatever line item I want to put them in.
Because the line items we have right now aren't in the right places. It's not, not indicative of what we're currently doing.
Can't we do the whole budget, can't this be a two part process? One for the one fifteen, the part of it where they're redone budget?
On moving stuff, that's what I'm going to, I'm going to find out about. That's why I sort of put it in two parts so that we have the one fifteen so that it doesn't get held up.
That would be two amendments.
Well, I can see if I can get on the one.
Sure.
We'd like to do that, we want to write it up again.
Yeah.
The other departments.
Okay, so then, then as we earn revenue, right? Then you don't need county money.
Well, as we earn revenue.
And then if we have a line item that we need to spend that revenue in and there's not any in the line item, we can say to you, that's where we want that money to go. If it's a line, as long as it's just every line item have to have a number right now in order for us to add to it. Like, because what you have right now doesn't have every line item that we're currently using.
I, I do not believe so. I will check on that, but no, I do not believe so. Because I know, like, you guys had taken out the homemakers and stuff before. And so she's showing what she's utilizing there and that's why that is in the red right there. It's because you guys do have them, which is great. I mean, that's what they were wanting. So I would say that's one of the instances. I know that you're going to be putting money in different, where it's coming in from that. It, it's just the initial had to be that way.
Anyway, I hear what you're saying, that in your opinion, this is the correct way to do our budget and that every county should be operating in this way. But I'm telling you, every county is not operating in this way.
Every county doesn't do everything exactly the same, but I'm going to tell you, it says one hundred percent. Big bold letters in the handbook, you do not appropriate revenue. Now, the budget amendment that we're doing for the other departments except for court to court because of the, um, court duty that they have on them or court ordered to pay is all revenue that they have brought in that they need to make green. You know, it's, it's to bring their stuff over to them to utilize.
If you have it unplanned, say, somebody wants to donate twenty thousand dollars to us.
Then we have to make it green. We have to do it for a budget amendment.
So you will have to amend every time.
We have to.
Post it in the paper and amend it for everybody every time somebody gets.
Yes, they got right, right money. We have to do a budget amendment to bring it, make it green for the sheriff and for nine one one.
So you're going to be doing budget amendments.
We're going to do them as they're needed.
A lot?
We're going to do them.
Or does that not happen to people? Do you not get unplanned revenue?
Not a lot, no. No, but I mean, usually they wait and then they, it's, it's Jared. He's got insurance funded. We have to bring it over and make it green. You don't just put that money in there. Otherwise, you're levying the taxpayers for every dollar that they got on the assumption that they might have a donation that comes in and you want to make it, you know, you want it to show. So, no, we, it's a budget amendment and that's, always have been a budget amendment called the departments.
And in the past, if we got a grant unknown, we just called and said, we have a, a new line item that we need to add in and they gave us a line item number and we deposited it. And that was it.
Should have been making it green.
There's never been any amendment done.
But there is, if, if we go back and look at stuff.
Do you bridge them?
Uh, you, you can deposit it in, but you can't bring it over into the expense lines to use it. You can bring revenue in. We can give you a line item to make that, where you can deposit it without an amendment, but it doesn't show on your expense side for you to use that money.
So what you're doing is you are, you are directly connecting revenue to which expense line it's coming from. And that's a change.
When you, when you have it go to the.
And that's a change, it's never been done that way before.
Yes, it has.
We've, public health has never assigned their revenues to an expense line.
No. Well, you do, you say you want to spend here, whatever, I don't know where they pull it through, but in order to make it green.
We've, we've never assigned.
I mean, Amber's been very strict with that. It's not green. It's not, if it hasn't been whenever it's new.
I was there until two, until twenty twenty and no one ever asked me to take.
How do.
Revenue and directly correlate it to an expense line.
Well, you're wanting to, you had more groupings of your lines that were kind of plugged together and I know that since you were gone, that Carol did break those out more, like your best grant for an example, where it's, it's structured a little bit differently than it has been in the past to show clarity on where the money is, it's going in use and stuff. Just as I assumed is why she did it, but I know that she said that she's added lines at those points. But whenever money comes in that is new, grant or whatever, it doesn't just automatically come over where you can utilize it. You guys have been spending it because of the way that it was set up of appropriating revenue. But it needs to be green so legally can be used over on the expense side in every department. And we have budget amendment that's showing that. That's how I, you know, restructuring and that stuff. That's how I was taught by Carol when she was here on how to do that.
So we'll get you the information you're asking for.
Okay.
Um, by tomorrow morning. Um. Do you want us to restructure the current one by line item? Where should.
I said, I said to use the one fifteen. I said, do the one fifteen first and then do what, if, if it's possible on how you would want it moved, if it was able to be moved at all.
All right. What else do you need from us?
I think that's the two things we need so we can get them. She can get stuff to the paper.
Get to the paper.
In the morning, because it has to be there by noon or something.
Four thirty. But I have it together tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay. So when you amend the budget totals, right? So right now, you've given us authority to spend three hundred and something thousand. You're adding a hundred and fifteen to that. So we'll have authority to spend four hundred or five hundred thousand once this extra one fifteen goes on. Is that going on with the amendment in September or will that drop on October first?
This will go on the amendment. That's right.
When the amendment is done?
Yeah.
So it will be done then?
Yeah.
All right. So then we have a maximum expenditure allowance of, let's just say, five hundred thousand, okay? We'll, we'll just not adding those, is one fifteen added on to what we have now?
Right.
Um, as our revenue comes in, our expenditures are going to go up. There, there's no amendment, I mean, how do you handle that? Because our goal is we're going to be bringing in revenue and we'll, we'll need that to operate.
Right.
So we're going to be bringing in eighty thousand a month as well.
Right, so once you pass the one seventy-seven that they have given you guys already as an advance on that, then we can appropriate that revenue on over.
And then, so then our budget can go up to that higher number without any.
Right, as you're bringing it in, as long as it's not new and the one that was new, we already know about, right? So, yeah.
So the total bottom line expenditure will.
It will grow as your revenue grows.
How often would we do that? We make a deposit once a week. Do we call you weekly and say, this is where those dollars go? Or do we call you monthly and say, this is where those dollars go? What do we do?
I'd say as you bring it in.
As you bring it in.
Yeah.
So we, we, when we make that deposit, we would, we notify you in writing where.
Yeah, we brought it at.
Which line items.
We need to have it show here, yeah.
And once it goes, it can't be moved, so you better guess correctly.
Yep.
So you're saying.
You're making it hard.
Green.
You're making it hard.
Eighty thousand a, a month?
If we spend the full amount of the.
But they haven't brought it in yet.
If we pull in, well, and if you look at our, our current stuff, we brought in, in July, twenty-five thousand in twenty-one, the next year, forty-three, the following year, fifty, the last year, thirty-six, this year, fifty-seven. July is the lower month and our revenues are just erratic. Our revenues are never going to be consistent.
It's consistent.
Right, they're just not going to be.
Right.
At the end of the year, they would average that. If we spend the full amount of the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that are allowable for projects with the emergency preparedness grant, then we would need, that's the full maximum revenue that we're going to, but the show we spend about half of that. So in reality, our revenues are going to be less than that and so will our expenses because we just have to allow for the possibility that we will fully have spent that emergency preparedness grant. Does that make sense? Like, I mean, not everybody spends all of their money in this twelfth county.
But you've already spent half of that emergency.
No.
That's what you just said.
No, this year, this last year.
Yeah.
We keep about half of it. The other half goes into projects that, that other counties can draw money from. But they only spent half of that. So the revenue was half and the expenses were half for that two hundred. They only spent like a hundred and fifty thousand in projects instead of two hundred and ninety thousand in projects. But we have to budget as though it's two ninety, so that we have the funds available.
Right.
If we got it. So realistically, are we going to spend that full amount? Probably not. So will our revenues be eighty? Probably not. Because we'll be a hundred thousand less in expenses than we estimate. So we just have to budget for the maximum. Is that clear?
Okay, I got it, I got it.
You look as confused as I feel.
The bottom line, don't hire at a high salary. Because that's hurting you. It really is hurting you. I understand, as I hear from other people, well, a nurse could go to a hospital, but they don't want to go to Omaha. They want to be here. So I say, Brenna, you have a heck of a salary. You don't have a master's, you don't have associate. I, I was appalled.
I do have a bachelor's degree.
You have a bachelor's, okay, for seventy-nine thousand dollars out of a little county public health admin. That's huge. And we're struggling. We're absolutely struggling. I keep saying, when a farmer doesn't have any money, you don't go out and buy a tractor. That doesn't work. You guys just got to watch your, your admin fees because it, that's what's killing you. That is just what's killing you. I don't even know what Alex does day by day. He keeps saying, well, I answer phones.
Alex does grant billing. Alex prepares bills. Alex, um, does all of the, um.
And Camper's.
Brenna do that? No, she doesn't have time. She only works half time at Seabody's. She runs a grant, Dan, after.
So the grand rider doesn't help you? Since everybody's still busy riding.
The grand rider hasn't, she's applied for a couple for us, but it wasn't successful.
I mean, that's why.
And you have to pay for that, that's not free.
Roger Ian.
That's not free.
Well, neither are they with them seeing.
But this is a salary.
Do we?
Half of Brenna's salary is reimbursed by a grant. The other half is paid by, um, county funds. Now, we could have her not do that grant and she could take on more grant funding and have a receptionist who just answers the phone, but, um, Alex does a lot more than that.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I'm just saying, when people see the salaries that get published, we get, we get torned. So this is, this is what I'm very concerned about. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So you need to go back and.
We'll do like.
A little bit, bring us our figures and we'll run with it. From there, we'll find out what we can do on this end. Uh, go from there. All right?
Any action you can take on this.
Well, in the meantime, maybe, I guess we better call and make sure how far we can go. Let's make sure we cover our tracks. Okay?
Do you need to take any action, I'll say again?
No, I'm, I'm trying to think whether we want to put it, you know, in. What kind of motion or what action? You know, what we've asked them to do is nothing more than to bring the budget to us. Or he should have been prepared to begin with or, you know.
Everybody.
Do you think you guys would like this?
Well, just an example, the other department's got the line item with what they're requesting. And, and these are both transfers of funds that they've gotten in already, but.
So do you want to state what the budget amendment is going to say? If we can.
I really know what it's going to say, so.
That like. I did.
I just want to make sure we're all covered if we have to be. Both of us.
My struggle here is that I feel like you think we're mismanaged or not spending within our budget structure. And I'm telling you, we spent exactly within the budget structure that we set up with this amendment we're bringing.
It's a line item problem.
Yeah, and more comes, goes back to a line item problem. Okay, we'll all agree on that. So.
But she's saying of that line item, it's what, forty-five thousand?
I have it for you.
But she's saying that of that line item, it's what, forty-five thousand is what we need? So I mean, I'm like, it's, that's the only.
And how we can fix that, we don't know. You know, I mean, yeah, it'd be simple to say, well, I can just transfer this over, but whether we can or not legally.
Well, that's, what was allocated in there is half of the money that, that is, it's almost fifty percent of what is included in the total budget.
Right, because that's most of the money.
Right, so we have need it right now.
And he had, I believe, a hundred and sixty-some thousand in there in the, in the March one. Yeah, so.
Okay. You all right with that?
Struggling, as all of you are.
I have nothing else, I mean.
Okay.
You don't, all right? What's on it, you guys?
And just for clarity, Marie Seach states that their task act, asking non-including and under control in the government of health is eight hundred and eighty-six thousand for health. And their total is two six zero. So just, that's what she said. Maybe she was incorrect, but that's what she did.
No, I got the information, she didn't have.
Yeah.
That's, she's a public health in Pot County. So I'll question him again.
Okay, thanks. There we go. So we'll get you those numbers, do you need us back next week?
No, I read it before then.
No, we'll get you the information too. Do you need us back next week?
No.
I know.
Can I just, do I get the phone?
All right.
Thank you all, appreciate it. We'll struggle through this.
That's mine. I thought it'd be pulled in here, sometimes I come in free stuff, so.
Mostly it's not.
Okay, what kind of a date do you need?
So, um, either the thirteenth, it carries to a special meeting or the seventeenth at nine thirty in the morning.
The thirteenth on a Friday.
So are you asking if we, if we meet on Friday, we don't have to meet on Tuesday?
That's not what I'm asking. But it would be a very short meeting, I would think.
Are you free that morning or, you know?
I'm free, yeah, which.
I'm free. You went good morning?
You can do it whatever timeline on the thirteenth.
On the seventeenth or the thirteenth?
The seventeenth could be like around nine thirty, cause normally when we do it during regular meetings, nine or nine thirty. If you do it on the thirteenth, you can do whatever time you want.
But the thirteenth.
There's only a two thirty in the morning.
Just, just to check. I don't agree, but.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Thirteenth, I can't make it, I'm in California.
Okay, on the thirteenth?
All right, I'm like, always go for California. You only need two of us here, so.
You know what it is, we're just setting the time on it.
Oh, right.
We'll go ahead with thirteenth.
Okay, so it's the thirteenth.
Seventeenth I'll be there.
Okay, thirteenth at what time then?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, okay.
That's, okay, this is, this is the budget hearing. We're setting a date right now for the budget hearing on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
For public health.
Well, do the budget hearing, the, everybody, yeah.
Okay, public hearing for the whole thing. Would you like to make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I make a motion to have a, 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 a public budget here. Gotta get my dentures in. At eight thirty on September thirteenth.
September thirteenth.
The motion made in second is set a public hearing date on September thirteenth, eight thirty AM. Budget amendment hearing. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion. Motion carrying. What we got?
Yep, um, well, we got Amy.
That, that was me, you just said that one.
Okay. Did that. Perfect.
So Amy and I have had discussions on this, whether we can transfer in-house like this, what we have to get done, you know, uh.
I think we all have. Ready to go adjourn or we?
Yep, I don't think.
I make a motion to adjourn at ten-ten.
The motion made in second is to adjourn meeting at ten after ten. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.